All right, first thing on the agenda is discuss full consortium.
Yes, last week I went to the meeting where we had asked to send a letter asking to become members of the consortium. And the guys that went and made a presentation basically arguing as they had to meet privately that it would be a burden on the group to add in town because the limited amount of money that would be bringing over the table. And then they called for a vote. And the members from the smaller communities including my friend Joe Fredandis from Plainville and Jack Hunter from Tava and Randy Butner from Rainham all argued in favor of our joining. When they took the vote Jane Cutsey from Middleboro joined them in voting, that's it.
Oh, good.
So it's kind of like an open day. Something's working.
Something's working on favorite, right, yep.
Right. So there was an issue with regard to when we might be able to entertain projects from town. They were going to have to talk to HIDE, House of Urban Development about that because it's late in the fiscal year for them. And so they're going to have to get some advice from them as to whether or not it'd be immediate.
Or for the next fiscal year.
Or it would be in the next fiscal year. So we don't know that yet.
Okay.
But the good news is that we were invited to.
Yeah?
In its members.
So we're, we've got voted in.
We'll let you know when we know.
You guys are going to leave now?
Yeah.
You're not going to stay for the whole meeting?
We're going to go celebrate.
Is it vote? Vote? No, no. All right, so you'll find out. We're going to break out the sharing.
Okay.
So will they give us a formal letter? We'll give you the sharing, all right. All right, read outline of aggregation program. Suggestions. All right, this is a procedure for review by citizens, suggested procedure for providing a review by citizens of an aggregation program by municipality. Number one, at a meeting of the town where the board is select, we read a brief outline of the aggregation program. Announce that the aggregation documents will be available for review in the municipal offices, on the municipal website and other related website. And announce that there will be a two-week period to submit written comments. So, but we're going to read this on the 16th, right? We're going to have to read that now, don't we? You have to give me the stuff on us if we have to read today. This little thing, you have to say what the two-week period will be and when you want the public comment period to be. And then I have to put it on the website. So you have to announce when that will, two-week comment. Well, we haven't discussed that. When do you want the two-week period to be?
We should discuss that.
Right.
How far up can we push it?
He said it shouldn't be too far.
Well, we need to, we need a little bit of time to get the documents.
Yeah.
Yep.
So they want us to read this before our town meeting? Or I thought we were going to read this at our town meeting and then give everybody a two-week?
I think.
I would rather read it at a town meeting so more people are, remember we talked about that?
Yep.
Yeah, it makes more sense, but that would be in June, right?
Right.
Yeah, it wouldn't work time-wise. I think they have a timeline. They consider, some people, and perhaps they consider this to be a town meeting, you know, and reference it, it slunkens me as being a town meeting. So that might be the, it's part of the confusion.
Well, I would hate to.
Put it a couple of weeks out and start two weeks, two weeks?
I would hate to do this and have it not be done the correct way.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we should put it off to the next meeting.
That's what I'm deciding, yeah.
Find out from them exactly.
Get them in.
No, we don't have to get them in, just get that, just get it clarified because we're shooting from the hip here and we don't want there to be more confusion. If we're going to try to set a date, I think we should make sure that we're going to set the correct date. And if we're going to have people submit oral comments, we're going to get that word out there, so we need time for that, too. I don't know. So can we put this on our next agenda and just have, have the pieces to the puzzle already in there? So all we can do is read on time and figure that out from there, okay?
Have the committee questions, any questions?
We want them to.
I mean.
Doesn't matter to me. If we feel like we need, we need to, they can come. But if we get the puzzle pieces together, we're not going to need to. Okay.
Okay.
All right, Tuesday Club of the Sona in association with the Freetown Cultural Council will be having their annual strawberry festival on June 21st, 2015. And are requesting approval from the board from Village Bandstand, which are a pleasure.
Motion to approve their request.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Listen, last year, last year they had an issue down there on parking, somebody taped off an area. And I don't know if anybody from that group pursued it at all in town, but they had taped off an area around the building. And actually, they tried to prevent people from going in and parking, but they don't really park. I just hope that doesn't happen again.
I think sometimes we get lost in communication between the two groups, so maybe if the, if the cultural council told them when they were going to be there and, you know, made nice.
I know, I know they had, they had to have a police department. So we don't, I mean, we don't want that to happen again this year.
Right, but if it's private parking, we can't.
Yeah, but here's a question, it's the way the boundary lines, huh?
All right, then we should probably find that out, with the assessors now.
Yeah.
All right, so then that way we'll know ahead of time and then we can forward that information to the cultural council so they'll be aware of it.
Police department, so they will.
Right, okay. So can you check on that?
Check.
Okay. All right, it's a veterans agent here. Hi, Linda.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Who do you want me to?
Well, I'll get you.
I'll get it.
Thank you. I put in a reserve fund request.
Okay.
For the rest of this year, April, April, May, and June for the amount of $35,000. What we have left in the account is $4,507 as of right now. When the request was me last year for funds, we had less clients, so we ran out of funds sooner.
How many clients do you have right now?
We have 19 now.
19?
Yeah. Four which are unemployed, so.
Okay.
The amounts are larger.
Yep.
I also am looking, Citizens for Citizens has already run out of funds for fuel assistance. I was just notified of that this past week.
Okay.
So some of our clients are also sending in some of their fuel bills and we're allowed to pay up to 500 through the state. So I'm assuming that our monthly budget of $13,000 might be a little bit higher this one.
Okay. All right, what's, what's the question? She's asking for the $35,000. Any questions from the board?
What did we spend last year?
He, from what DM had on the list, I believe it was an average of nine, $9,000 a month.
$9,000 a month.
Yeah.
And you're at $13,000.
And I'm about $13,500 now. And that's not, like, including this month which people are already sending in their fuel bills, which is an average of $200 to $500 extra.
What's the criteria for paying our fuel bill fee?
As long as they went through Citizens for Citizens and they had fuel assistance, that pays most of their fuel bills throughout the winter. Where we had a really hard winter, the fuel bills were higher. So we are allotted $500 extra at the end of that season once we get that letter.
So pretty much Citizens for Citizens.
They, yeah, they ran out of.
They ran out of.
Yep, so now.
They do, they go through the process of checking everything to make sure they're out of it.
Yes, yes. I mean, not all of our clients are on fuel assistance, it's only those few that are, that are starting, you know, this last year up, but with below zero terms in everything the last month.
You think this will get you through the end of the year?
I'm hoping so, yeah. From what I can estimate, yes, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the $35,000 for veterans agents. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now you just have to bring it, once we sign it, they'll bring it to the finance committee.
Let's go sit here tonight.
Yeah, that's, that's it, all right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Building Commissioner, come on down.
There in case. Hello, everyone?
Hello. Hey, you're looking for a transfer in the amount of $64,050.
Correct, yes, for the electrical inspection fees. We, you know, we threw through and we ran out of money and I think it was due to the increase in the inspection fees, which we talked about in $25 to $35. But, you know, being there right now, I'm trying to think about, you know, even if we should maybe do a couple thousand dollars higher. And the reason why is that, you know, this is just a straight mathematical division here, you know, eight months or less. So, I mean, I would expect to go ahead and do more, work with sole apartments, electrical apartments coming into the springtime now. So I don't know if that's appropriate or if I could wait and figure it out.
Yeah, wait and figure it out.
It's kind of your territory this year, a wait.
Yeah.
Okay. But that's the reason, this is just a straight division to see what we estimate based on what we paid already.
What would, if you were to figure it that way, how much more than the $64,050 would be?
Once again, we're guessing based on the workload. I mean, we know we're taking in permits and, but we don't know, you know, like we said, solely, we recently raised the rates of solar because inspections were so many. It's just a workload that is, it's a new thing, it's the most popular problem right now.
Yeah.
So if the snow leaves, they're all going to be coming in. Can't gauge it. Like I said, this is Kim's best guess based on straight out looking forward. So it's easy to do that, but I hope they not come back like when we won't know for sure.
It's the most significant tax base gain that we've got going right now, so it's a good thing.
I mean, if you think you should keep it at that, that's fine, and ask the reason, and I hope you enjoy it.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion for $64,050. I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's pretty much what you get.
Okay. We don't need this one, do we, all right? No.
No.
Okay.
That's good.
Yep. Okay, town administration's report.
Yeah, I just have one more additional item for you tonight. And that has to do with the Freetown screw site and its potential future use. Back in January, we received the attached proposal for a Phase One environmental site assessment from Nobis Engineering's Tracy Costa. This represents the next phase of the Freetown screw site data. Completion of this study report will make the town eligible for additional mass development funding or EPA funding for further cleanup of the site that could eventually be made available to the housing authority for the construction of senior housing. And I've asked you to consider including this article for appropriation of $1,500 in schedule Tracy to come in here to a future meeting and make a presentation to board. This, this would involve possible cleanup in the, in the future of the Akrushinets site right over the line from our site.
Right, which we need that part.
Which we need in order to have enough land to.
To do it.
Get enough, enough units for senior housing.
So it's just the next step in the process?
In the process, yep.
And that was it?
That's it. You want to put an article on the warrant?
Yeah, but we haven't opened up the warrant.
Oh, and warrant, okay.
So.
Put it in the mix.
Yeah.
Okay.
Put that in the pile and once we open it up, then we'll vote on all of them.
Very good.
All right.
Yep.
And we should have that on the agenda for the next meeting. All right, so we can open and close the warrant and we'll not, well, set the dates for the warrant, all right. Thank God, I won't be the chair. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to personnel.
Personnel. Okay, personnel. First thing on the agenda is to reappoint Raymond Rodvik's Board of Registries.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion made to reappoint Tracy Knowles, Veterans Agent.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Tracy, you're on again. Signed, a change of status file for Mike McHugh. Rate of pay, increased conservation, $17.59 per hour.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's all I've got. We're going to deal with the school appointment.
That's at 6:30.
6:30, okay.
Yep. Right now we have 6:05, not quite. And we have a board of health variance at 6:05 and pool hearing at 6:50. 6:04. All right.
Days of upcoming board meetings? Thinking how do you invest?
Yeah. Anybody have anything for the board tonight? Public discussion? All these happy faces out there? Yep. Anything for board?
Really?
Yeah, I'd say so.
Yeah.
All right, we have a board of health variance for 13 County Roads.
County Road?
Yes.
That's me.
Hi, how are you? Come on up.
Bring your chair.
Bring your chair with you. Yeah.
You've seen a plan, asking for a one-foot variance for water table separation.
Could you give me a name?
I'm sorry, Ken Ferreira, professional engineer and land surveyor, part of Tidffoss Street in Betterbass.
Kevin, who explains?
Well, Alex, 13 County Roads looking for a repair. They are requesting a variance from a four-foot to three-foot separation under the amount of $1,504, maximum feasible compliance. They're allowed to do that, but let's jump and explain.
Yeah, it's a pretty straightforward request, you know, due to grading situations, we'd like to have one-foot separation from the four-foot water table.
Kevin, you reviewed it?
Yes, I reviewed it. In that section, as long as all the conditions are met, which they have, just so I can stand in the board.
Yeah.
A soil evaluator from the water hall has to approve it and back then it was.
I mean, it was Jokurea?
It was Jokurea.
Yeah.
Jokurea did it. Minimum of three-foot separation, which they are requesting here. System has failed, no increase in flow, so they're not going to increase anything. Right now this is going to be a commercial building or a motorcycle repair shop.
Yes, yeah.
I did speak to Department Inspector, he doesn't have, doesn't have any issues with the type things or anything.
Right.
So, and they're allowed, the most important thing, they're allowed to do this because there's no setbacks to private wells or property lines, they have water service.
Right, yeah.
Besides that, the only thing, my, my condition would be that they have to get a deed restriction on no increased flow.
That's fine. Will you agree?
Well, once they get the deed restriction, you get notified that they get it recorded.
Yeah, they don't get the system of compliance.
Until the deed restriction is actually, you know, filed at the registry deeds.
This is on County Road?
County Road.
Wait, down by the point, is that where?
Just, yeah, just past the point.
Just past the point, heading towards the veteran on the right-hand side.
Yes, yeah.
What's the board's opinion?
Based on his recommendation, based on Kevin's recommendation, I'd make a motion to approve the variance. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Kevin.
I apologize for being a little bit late.
No, you're welcome.
I was trying to find my place.
Okay, we have a pool here in relative to Verizon and Endstar for replacement of a pool at 497 on East Howland Road. The butters have been notified by certified, anybody here for that? Well, that was easy.
Thank you.
Didn't even have to say anything.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi, Kellyanne Pondin from Verizon.
How are you?
Thank you. And basically there's a new one being built up on East Howland Road. There's one that's kind of built out by the street and then there's another one going in next to it, there's one driveway cut out. We just need to place a midspan pole to feed that house to reset that.
All right. Anybody here, has a butter here? Okay.
Motion made, allow it? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're good?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well.
We did it.
I just, before we get into that though, I did ask Mark Rich to see if I could participate in that and he said no because the school committee, and everybody knows that I do work for the school, in the schools, although not under a contract, a union contract with them. But because the school committee hires the superintendent who then hires me, that it would appear to be a conflict of interest. So in that spirit, I will not be participating in that, in that form.
That's it?
All right.
Anything else we can do, anything?
No, I think we, we went through the whole agenda. Do you have anything else for us, Ally?
No.
No? Okay.
We can take, we can take, we can take a break.
Yep, we can take a break. And just, I mean, the way it'll work, everybody will come up one at a time, I'm assuming, and then just do a five-minute Q and A and then a joint vote between the two boards.
Everybody was invited, right?
Everybody, right? Okay.
This is to replace.
Mr. Niviera.
Yeah.
For the regional school committee to discuss the appointment of a school, of school committee members. I guess we invited Ms. Wilcox, Charlie Stockwell, Ritterbruch, and who's, Skye? Give me a break on Polish name.
Sankelitz.
Sankelitz. I should have said Jiswil, right?
Yeah, that's all right.
Now, my mother's main name was Mihalyn Bilewski and right now she's spinning in her coffin. So that's the deal. So would you, would you all come up and we'll chat and. See who's here? See who's here, I guess. See where you.
Excuse me.
Have a seat.
I guess.
Anybody else coming up?
Paul, you want the committee?
Yeah, true. Can I wait, if you've got any questions you're going to ask?
Just get by it. Let's sit down.
No seats?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not going to even play with your last name.
No, it's all right.
Hi, Jamie. All right, listen, since we only have two people here, I don't think anybody else is coming. Yeah, they're, they're late. So can I like to find out, to reach any people, why you want to be on the school committee in Freetown?
Want to go first?
Ladies first, of course.
I have lived in Freetown for 40 years. My husband and I have been married for 45 and we raised all of our children in town. They all went to Freetown Lakefield Regional Schools and they have very successful education. My husband and I both taught in town, I did Atsebauston, he was at Austin. And I just really want to pay back the community for all that it's given to us, being very happy here. And I think that as a retired teacher, I have plenty of time to just sit and to really examine the issues and to take my time and kind of come and sort some issues.
Very, very well said. I am, I'm actually a product of the Freetown Lakefield School District, I was a 2003 graduate of Almanaclet, I'm pretty proud, proud of that. I'm in education now in the Fall River Public School System. And again, similar, similar to Ms. Wilcox, I'm just, I just want to get back. I hold the Freetown Lakefield School District in high esteem. I don't feel I would be where I am today without it. So just coming back, I moved out of town temporarily when I resigned from the school committee a couple of years ago. And I'm happy to be back in town and hopefully, hopefully serve.
Who do you prefer for role?
I'm a teacher.
My question is that, and I just like your feelings on this, there's two parts to the equation. Managing the school is one, managing the budget is another. How important is managing the budget?
It's very important to me. As a matter of fact, I have been studying Common Core in the Park for the last three years. I went to State House and testified and I said these unfunded mandates, they're going to go, these unfunded mandates are going to ruin us, we're going to back with the communities. And I think that with Common Core and the Park, it's never been a cost in our stomach. As a matter of fact, when I went and talked to the legislators and I said to them, what do you think about this? They said, with Common Core. And they were very upset because they said they're supposed to be the boss and they didn't even know what it was. So I think that just to have a different voice on the committee that says, let's look at this, because we need, like, for instance, Lakefield voted to get out of Common Core and yet I did notice that in the budget, they were going to have textbooks that were bought, were Common Core compliant, and they wanted to hire a teacher from Common Core. So that's kind of a slap in the face for Lakefield. Freetown hasn't said anything about it, but I think that's a slap in the face. And I would just like to bring these issues up and to have a truly look at it and to study it because Charlie Baker is studying this right now and he's also studying the parking bans as opposed to NCAS. And I don't see what the rush is. You know, we don't need to do anything right now. I think that the county sense approach is such as to wait and see before you think about spending the money.
Those are good ideas.
So the question was about dealing with the operations and dealing with the budget?
It was two sides.
Right, absolutely.
Manage the school and manage the budget because one's equally as important to go.
Yeah, they're both very important, but I think it has to be a balance. I mean, looking over the budget now, the last numbers that I saw was a 2.26 percent increase. percent increase. And then going back and forth and being at the school committee meetings and hearing the needs of our kids, I think it's, I think that's a solid number. I think it's a, I think there's some common ground there. I think full day kindergarten would be a good thing. I think the fact that we're putting some tariffs back in the elementary school is a good thing, but I don't think we're, I'm speaking for the school committee when I don't think you guys think that's enough. But I think it's, it's a step in the right direction. I think with this budget at two-point-two-six, that percent increase, I think that's common ground right now. So, I think, I think from what I've seen, I think the relationship between the board and the board of selectmen is pretty good, where you guys are working pretty amicably to kind of find that common ground and find that balance. So, it's good. I mean, that's, that's going to be my viewpoint moving forward, so.
My follow-up question to you is, how do you fund this?
How do you fund that?
Yeah.
Well, it's not my, it's not my job to fund that.
It's your job.
It can be your job.
So, you just, you just hand us a bill?
Correct.
Did you think that's the process?
Well, I think you got to talk about it and absolutely figure it out, yeah.
How do you think we should handle it?
I think that we should cut as much as we can and when I was teaching in the classrooms and I know the names of our faculty, I know about the entire faculty, I know about the entire community, that I disagree on, we're a team. I am a team player, but I think that if, I will have a school committee and I had to look at the whole budget, I would be very careful about where we would spend our money. Because I know in my own classroom years ago, we had cut that and yet the ingenuity of the teachers to join together and to find out different ways of approaching things, I think is very good. And I think that teachers still have the ingenuity to do that.
Let me ask you, if you're on the school committee, who is your responsibility to?
First of all, we would be the boss of, the superintendent of, I'm sorry, the boss of the superintendent rather than the other way around. I think that he would have to be listening to us, but we would have to be listening to the voice of the community, the voice of the parents. I believe in local control, I believe in working with the selectmen. You know, I think you need to listen to all aspects of it and to sit and to study it before you make a decision and I think you can make a decision on Monday.
Yeah, ultimately, it's our constituents, but I think at the same time, keep the best interests of the kids on the mind.
I guess you kind of said it before that the responsibility for funding is our problem and your responsibility is to spend money and give us a bill. I kind of disagree a hundred percent with that.
Okay.
I don't have any other questions. The only thing I, I'm just going to throw this out there and I want you to be aware that as the school budget grows, there's only so much income in the town of Freetown. And at some point, if we didn't put a stake in the ground at this particular time as to what the towns could afford to fund, it would have cost more money than the total income of the town of Freetown. Certainly, we can't sustain that. So, if you're on, either one of you are on the school committee, I'd like to keep that in mind in your decision-making process. And with that being said, what are your feelings on the applicants placing?
You have two highly qualified applicants, there's no question about it. We're fortunate that they're both said, they not only have indicated they have a willingness, but they're bringing a lot to the table, which is very important. They're coming in kind of mid-cycle, they're coming in in the middle of the budget discussions, negotiations, there's a lot going on. The, my personal speaking just for me, the other two can speak for themselves, when I saw Will start coming to the meetings, knowing his background, knowing his experience and now knowing that he is an educator in an urban district, he brings that piece to the table as well, which I think is important. So, I was excited to see him back and I personally feel he'd be a terrific fit.
Gentlemen, Bob, Derek, do you think?
Well, I didn't particularly like the answer, cut as much as you can. I think the answer really is to get as much as you can, but be in, be in accordance with the town and try and work with the town in order to do that. I mean, you're representing the students, the children of the town and you're trying to get, do as much as you can for them, that's the role of the school committee, that's the job. As far as unfunded mandates, you can go to the, you can go to the legislature, but those mandates are really driven by the Department of Education. And every year at the annual state convention, there's a resolution drafted to send a message to the Board of Education, no more unfunded mandates. And that's been going on for ten, eleven years and nothing happens because, I don't know, they just don't have, they just don't have the ear of the, of the Department of Ed, Department of Ed drives those mandates. So, it's, it's very frustrating to see those things come down and have to pay for them without any, any funding coming.
I applaud both candidates and I agree with Gene, we have two great candidates here. I applaud both of you for the sacrifice of time and effort that this requires. I don't think anyone understands until you actually have the opportunity to serve, the time and that is put in, you know, sacrificed time to really get in and dig in and do the job if you want to do the job right. I've had the pleasure to serve with Will, so I, I know what Will brings to the table in his candidacy. So, you know, with that being said, I think, you know, we have solid people with, that can bring a balance of expertise to the board.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out to everyone, including those that are listening to us, that two-point-two-six percent increase in the budget, as you know, represents one-point-one million dollars, which is a hundred and fifty percent of the total new revenue of both towns. That's the problem.
I thought we were here to discuss an appointment and not have a budget discussion. I just like to...
I'm not having a budget discussion.
No, we're well aware of the numbers, John.
These, I know, but these, two-point-two-six percent was mentioned?
Yes.
I think that the public deserves to know what the import of that is. It's every dollar plus. And that means that not only on the general government side do we have nothing to work with, we have to make further cuts in order to supply that. That's the problem. That's a serious problem.
And that's why we have public hearings on that topic.
I'm making a motion to appoint Jane Wilcox, that's her position. Just like to say this, that I understand where you're coming from, Will.
Yeah, sure.
And I really do applaud you coming here and I applaud the school committee for what you do. And I understand it can be a thankless job and I understand it eats up tons and tons of your time, but I'm going to second your motion simply because I like the idea of the institutional knowledge for all these years and in the system. So, I just second your motion. So, on our behalf, all in favor of agreeing, Jane?
Oh, so, the support of all of us?
All of us. And I guess the second half of this is out of school committees. Do we have two phones?
Well, can you just go through process? Do you call your vote and do we make our own?
No, it's a, it's a, we'll just see.
Well, okay, then you made a motion and seconded, or just called a motion?
I called a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is up to you, you can either second or...
No, it's been seconded and you called the vote and you have votes at aye, now you haven't asked for abstentions or nays.
Abstentions or nays?
Nay.
Three nays?
Nay, nay, nay.
So, Will? Congratulations?
Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion that we take into the adjournment, thank you. We're going to adjourn the meeting for one, two minutes. Second. Paul, I think, if you'd like, I'll take a walk.
Nate Wilson Wood Jr. for the appointment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay, nay. The ayes have it? So, you're not many.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
Listen, you can make second, make yourself up some cards, hand mark at the polls and all you have to do is have your name on it, a little swat, please sign me in for this week. We can do that, okay? That would be a lecture, that would be a lecture. That's how you do it. Say who you are, hand them on, ask people the right names. Ask them to raise your hand. But listen, the one I would say, take a picture of, of your school committee, put your name.
Okay, so, we are going to continue our meeting and we'll be meeting with the finance committee to go over the budgets. Does the board have anything under new business? No? Paul, anything under business? All right, so, we're meeting with the finance committee now.
I hope so. That was an estimate with the cold winter, what I was explaining earlier was a lot of our, well, not, maybe fifty percent of our clients or our veterans or spouses have fuel assistance through Citizens, Citizens. That has run out and I think it's because the winter has been so cold. So, what happens is the state has allotted us to allow another five, an additional five hundred dollars in fuel assistance, which the town gets paid back seventy-five percent of that.
A piece, right.
Yeah, a piece of whoever requested. It doesn't mean all of them will request it.
Right.
This month, I've had two clients request that. So, that amount may go up a little depending on how these elderly clients have done with their fuel.
Yeah, they got another month or so before the program.
Yeah, I mean, it probably, usually, they make it pretty much.
What unfunded liability do you have right now?
Say again.
The, what, what are you in the hole right now?
I'm not, I have four thousand dollars left in the account, but as soon as this warrant goes out, it'll be, it'll be ten thousand for this month, for April. So, our warrants now, from what we requested last year, what Dan requested last year, we've accumulated four more clients. Three of those are unemployed, so it's a little bit higher. So, our estimate from nine has gone from nine thousand to thirteen fives.
Without the transfer, they won't be able to do the next one.
Yeah, we won't be able to do April's warrants.
Okay. I'm going to ask you, I'll give you my phone number and I'm going to see if anybody's going to have any questions and then I'm going to, you know, from there, I might ask you to come back tomorrow night, same place, same station, right?
Okay.
Same time.
Okay.
Like in the past, we've usually done what you need...
Call that number, that's my cell phone.
Okay.
We usually do what you need for the next month, but we don't try to project till the end of the year.
Because it's a lot of money and I know there's going to be a lot of questions, you know, so.
Absolutely, okay.
I'm just talking past, anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The other one, I see no problem, but I don't, I don't think he has to come back. From that, okay, I mean, we've discussed this many times, the electrical inspections, so they kind of know it's coming.
Yeah, I heard what you said up front and there's more stuff going on, more visits and everything, so.
I mean, it's, it has to be, got to have an electrical inspector, so.
Can't do without.
Okay, I...
That's good. Do you want to talk about anything else? Nope.
That's all we got in front of us here, right?
That's it.
For, for me, we're just going to go over the budgets now and you'll be all set too.
I have a budget, I'm asking, do I need to stay for that?
Oh, I don't know, are you there any more questions for her, Paul?
No, we do.
There's a budget, there's a budget.
There's a budget, oh, all right, okay, all right.
Yeah, don't leave yet.
I'm only talking about as far as these reserve fund transfers, I didn't know you had, I thought we had been over the budget, but maybe not.
I think there was... Yeah, I already spoke.
Good night, all.
Good night.
We'll talk to you later.
I'm trying to get you out of here.
Scott, not sticking around.
Scott, drive slowly, will you?
You know, I should, I thought today, I made fun of you three times driving fast, I'm going to stop.
Okay.
All right.
Is that you on the paperwork?
Yeah. I do drive slow.
I know you can multitask when you're driving.
All right, so we'll do the, we'll do you now. Yeah, so we'll do veterans first, so we're at high thirty-three.
Okay, so, her original budget was one-thirty-three, two-fifty, she's requesting one-eighty, two-fifty. She better stop talking.
Well, that has to do with the, the amount of clients that we have gone from, from when Dan Far started. I know that last fiscal year, he had to ask for reserve fund transfers also, so I just tried to take that into account, including the fact that we have the four extra, you know, estimated at thirteen thousand five per month. And that's an estimation, some months are a little lower, some months are a little higher, but it was easier for me to request a little bit more than less. That, that also includes, you know, the supplies, my salary and the education and travel pay that's included in the full budget.
Kim, when they get reserve fund transfers, does it show up in the fiscal year fifteen budget plan?
Well, it hasn't been approved for fifteen.
No, 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 for last year.
This only has fifteen budget.
Fifteen, so would that show up?
It would, it would be allocated under revisions if we had the fourteen budget.
Okay, so, one-twenty-two included the stuff that he had last year, the increased workload?
No.
It didn't?
No, he had to ask for reserve fund transfers too.
We gave him some transfers.
Oh, yeah, we gave him a few transfers last year, I don't have them with me, but...
Yeah, for fourteen, he had to request also additional, so when I went and put the budget in for this fiscal year, I tried to, you know, make sure that I had enough so I would not have to come back or, you know.
Now, do you have any new clients in the pipeline?
I have two possible right now, so.
You had, you have how many clients?
I have nineteen right now.
Nineteen, and that's the same amount of clients that he had last year, nineteen.
And one of them left and came back and he's unemployed, it shouldn't have been nineteen. Oh, we did have two deceased.
Two deceased, yep.
So, it's, it's, yeah. And I have two on the possible right now that had just contacted me.
I guess the thing that I'm trying to get my head square on is that, so, the original budget for fifteen was one-twenty-one for benefits.
That is what the budget is, but that is not what was requested and that is not what was actually paid out for fourteen.
It was higher.
It was higher.
Okay, so that would justify the one-sixty-eight. That's all I want to get straight in my head.
Mm-hmm.
We know exactly what was paid out, we don't yet, right? Know what was paid out.
Well, the thing is...
For fourteen, we do, but I don't think I have it with me.
We're going to get majority of the money back, so, we need to see.
Right. What is the impression?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, so.
But it's a year behind.
Yeah.
Yes. This is just a moving, this budget, though, is a moving budget because you don't know.
It's a moving target because you don't know what's going to come in.
So, I mean, even if we went with the lesser number and level funded, they, they're going to come back anyway.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's why we have the reserve because we don't know, right? So, if you're basing it on nineteen clients, nineteen clients was at one-twenty-three, two-fifty.
Well, if you, what I'm, what I'm thinking is if you're over budget a little bit, I mean, it's only going to come back into the general fund if she doesn't...
Yeah, but we don't know, we're going to be cutting budgets. We're not going to be...
Our general fund is not going to be cutting.
What we have this year is not going to cover what we're doing, so we're going to be, we're going to be cutting budgets.
This year, you can't, you can't cut the benefits.
No, 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 no.
Can't cut the benefits.
Right, that's not, that's not my implication, is just saying like, this possibly will be level funded and then you may have to go through the same process again. I think that if, if we were flesh, then we would increase it by, say, ten or fifteen thousand and at least it would give us a better estimate, but I don't think that's going to, I don't think this year is the year that we're going to do that.
Well, we should look at the last three years actual, just so we know. Well, we should look at the last three years actual, just so we know.
It has gone up significantly.
Because.
I believe it. Oh, it went from seven people.
To nineteen.
To nineteen people.
Yeah, and they're not, that, I mean, it's not that they're not out there. These people are out there.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They never were taken care of.
And then personnel services also went up ten, ten to twelve thousand dollars, which wasn't there before either, so, in the last two years.
Yeah. But if you look at the last three years' actual, about two years.
Now, I'm gonna ask this, I'm gonna ask you a stupid question. Is she full-time or part-time?
Part-time.
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 Full-time. She, she gets eleven thousand. That's her salary. That's very.
No.
Would you?
No.
Absolutely.
Oh, I think they give us full-time for half of that.
They do. It shows how smart we are.
And about no time.
Still get more than we do, so.
I get a big fat tariff. You're laughing.
I'm not asking for a raise, I'm not. I'm just asking for money to help them.
Absolutely. Alright, any other questions?
No, I can't, I don't, it's there, it's there. I mean, it's, uh, like you say though, I, I, there's a couple of, you know, I'm sure there's gonna be questions on the board that I can't answer properly. So, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll just try to get you, uh, well, I mean, it's only gonna be you and this other one here and the other one, I, they, they've heard about the electrical inspections left and right, the rest of the board, so I don't see a problem.
I think these, uh, the two, the two transfers, they've worked out, I mean, they basically have followed the instructions of the finance committee, worked their balance out. There would be no reason not to approve the.
No. In my eyes, absolutely no reason, either one of them, but I can't speak for people that aren't here. But I, I, I can foresee, uh, uh, on veteran benefits.
Alright, are we all set? Alright, okay, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
So tomorrow night, seven?
Yeah, well, call me.
Call you?
Yeah, I don't want you to come for nothing.
Okay, alright, thank you.
How far away from here do you live?
I don't live far, but I have work tomorrow, so I just have to get somebody to cover me.
Oh, that's all right.
Yep, yeah.
I run a business and.
If you can avoid it, uh, Brad.
Yeah.
I don't think it's right. I mean, you came here, the board didn't show up, I mean, why should you be speaking again?
I'll call you tomorrow.
Yeah, call me tomorrow.
Is there a good time or any, or any time tomorrow?
Well, call me around, uh, call me around six o'clock and I'll have more information.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I asked for some more questions, but we're not gonna be able to. Well, you know what?
I don't, it's very simple, but.
Yeah, well, the, the bottom line is, the next warrant won't be able to be, you know, covered without a transfer, so.
Okay, town clerk, one sixty-one. Come on down, Miss Jackie Proctor. I'll take door number one. Alright, so we'll take them, one, one of the ten, so we'll do your office first, okay? Alright, so. I guess the first thing that sticks out is your, the salary has a four point four percent increase.
Yeah, but what that is, is we were supposed to have a special town meeting where the longevity was supposed to be put into our pays, so I had put it in automatically. So that's already in there. So, um, it would be the seven hundred will not, you'll see, if you go down to longevity, there's nothing there for that.
Okay.
Excuse me. So that's in there.
Alright, so, cause that'll be the, that'll be taken at the special before him.
Okay.
Okay.
And, um, I did put in for three percent. It wasn't four before, but that's the difference. The rest of the longevity space.
Is that right on the first page here when we turn it up?
Her notes up here and then we got this couple of pages further back for notes here. Maybe the next one. Oh, you got two there or something. So she put the longevity plan last.
There's not much left of the rest of the budget, cause the pay is ninety-five percent of our budget, so we have very little of our spend. And we've been trying to level fund since two thousand and eight when we were asked to level fund, so with the increase in postage and everything else, it's not easy.
It stops in the old free coupons.
Unfortunately, a lot of our stuff for the mailing is required by law, so.
Alright, any questions for that portion? Alright, so then we're going down to the primaries and election workers and that budget went down.
That's one sixty-two.
And that's because there's, um, a difference on the elections. You know, it depends how many elections I have each year, so that, that varies every year. So this year, we'll have two elections. On this fiscal year, it will be one annual and one primary. And then, um, there was a twenty-five cent an hour increase, um, put in for the election workers as far as on the salaries. Next year, there'll be a big change on the budget on here because we're gonna be having early voting elections for the presidential election, so um, that, that'll be for the next fiscal year though, so, but for this year, it's just, um, the local and the primary. I don't know how I'm gonna have early voting at the town hall because, as you said when you came in today, if there's excise tax due or anything, there's no pocket space over there. Um, I come in sometimes in the morning. I always come in later than, than everyone else, a little bit later. And there's so many times I have to sit there in the parking lot for somebody to leave. It, it, the parking is terrible over there. So to have early voting, that people are gonna be able to come in and vote before an election and they're gonna vote at the town hall, I can't see how that's gonna get done.
Oh, okay.
We'll address that one at first.
Alright, anybody have any questions for Jackie? No? Okay. You're all set?
Okay, registers, one more. Sixty-three. Well, it says registration, but it's really the registers.
Okay.
And that one is, um, again, was twenty-five cents an hour. That's for two final voter registrations for the elections and three final voter registration schedules for the town meetings, which would be the fall special. And then the special before the annual has a different cutoff, so we have to have two different ones for that, so that's basically that. And that includes the census mailing, um, and the streetless.
Okay, so.
And what, that budget, I mean, that budget went up sixty-four dollars.
Yeah.
That might have been something to do with the, with the postage increases.
Alright, alright, we're good. Nope. You know, questions? No.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Enjoy your evening, thanks.
Cemetery. Are you here for cemetery? Come on down.
Four and a half.
Yep. Four and a half. But that's an addendum one, right? Didn't you give us another, a new pack for that?
Yeah, yeah.
The last time.
I'm gonna be back tomorrow. And we definitely gonna need you tomorrow. You don't have the phone, listen to me. But if my daughter just says she'll show up tomorrow, tell her. Cemetery. One seven.
You know, cemetery.
Yeah, which one's the good one?
The nineteen thirty-five.
Nineteen thirty-five.
You don't think it was, no.
I like the other.
Oh, yeah. Why'd you opt for that? Two hundred and thirty-three percent, a hundred and fifty-one percent.
Bits came in much, well, some of that is because we consolidated the lines, but the bits came in much higher this year than they did last year.
Is everybody all set on, you got cemetery?
I'm trying to get it.
Okay.
I've got it right here, I believe, um.
It's like, uh, eight thousand dollars more.
About that.
No bits. The bits came in that much, didn't it? Cutting the lines?
Yeah, as an example, um, this year, the bid for the plumber cemetery was four hundred dollars per mowing. Last year, it was four hundred dollars for the entire year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's a big jump.
Yeah.
You have different people bid?
Yes, this year, we actually only had one person bid. Last year, I think we had four different people bid. We have never required the people doing the work to carry any kind of insurance. This year, we didn't require insurance, but we asked people to tell us if they had it and that seemed to scare some people away. So, uh, it's kind of a double edged sword. It's cheaper if they don't have the insurance, but then if they get hurt doing this, I don't know that much about insurance, but I think we'd get in trouble if they get hurt doing this and they weren't insured.
Could be we got a liability that I didn't have it. So bottom line, what you're thinking, the town could have liability?
That's kind of what I was thinking, yeah. I mean, I don't know that because I don't know insurance.
Yeah, right, I don't.
Yeah, like I said, this year, we didn't even require it. We just asked, do you have insurance? And we had some people who wanted to respond to that question.
So how many years have we been cutting the cemetery?
Uh, longer than I've been doing this. I've been doing this for about ten years and, uh, I think that's been going on longer than that.
Jeff, what is that, insurance? Do we, if, would we be liable if they, if a company goes in and cuts lawn?
We could. It's possible.
Yeah, well, you, if you hire somebody to work on your house and they don't have insurance and they fall off the house and they break their backs.
Then they sue me.
They sue you at your homeowner's and, you know, it's.
They're gonna sue me anyway.
Well, not if they have insurance and workman's, you know.
If the company's got enough insurance, they won't.
Yeah, that's why they, your insurance company tells you to make sure whoever you hire has insurance.
Who got in the bidding?
Uh, this year, it was T E C landscaping.
Who's that?
That's, uh, Tom Copeland. He's in the city. Uh, last year, the majority of the cemeteries were mowed by Wally DiMarandio and his family.
From you?
Yeah, well, they live in Lakeville now, but yeah, originally from here.
They've been doing it for a while, hasn't it?
They have, and Heath Chase used to do some of them, uh, Mark Saint Laurent years ago used to do some of them. We had a fellow from Lakeville for a few years. He used to do the burying ground before the highway department took that on.
Can we get a couple more bids before we come on in? We think that would be the next step.
How much per mowing are they charging?
Uh, it's different prices, different cemetery. So like the plumber cemetery, um, that's four hundred dollars per mowing. The Richmond cemetery is thirty-five dollars per mowing. Tisdale's a hundred and fifty per mowing, Windlow's seventy-five. Mike Hathaway is a hundred, Quaker Hills forty dollars. Brayley East is one fifty, Brayley West is one fifty, East Free Towns two hundred, Morton's one sixty, Mother's Brook is two ten. It, it's primarily dependent on the size. The Richmond cemetery is about the size of this table, that's why it's thirty-five dollars.
Where, where did you have it, I can't see?
Uh, it was on the town website, town hall, several of the local businesses, the library, it was a highway barn also. Went out most of the places where the warrants usually go, um, plus the website.
Is there any restriction that, uh, it couldn't be mailed out to different companies?
If somebody asked for it to be mailed, we, we would've done that.
If you mailed to somebody who bid last year, even though they didn't get it?
Everybody that bid last year got a copy in the mail.
Alright.
That's why we put it on the website this year was to try and hit more people, but we ended up with fewer.
So it's already been one?
Uh, we sent them a letter saying you were the only bidder and, um, you know, these are the number of times we would like you to mow each one, but.
No contract.
No.
But Michael, I guess, how, if, once you do that though, and you don't get this budget, then what is your recourse? Because you're, you've awarded a bid that.
Well, we, we didn't award a bid. They said you were the only bidder.
Alright, so there is wait for you to get out of that.
We're not required to bid at all, so I would think in terms of that, yes, there would be, I mean, if you folks said, this is horrible, try doing it again, we could try doing it again. You know, we had it out. The normal place, other than the newspaper, which we didn't have to do and we didn't really have the money to spend on that. We put it out pretty much everywhere the town busy usually put out and we had only one response.
I don't think you can enter into a contract. Now we're gonna find, you know, what it's paying. Well, no.
Well, we, we haven't done a contract.
No, but you can't even enter into a contract. The board's the only one that can enter into contracts.
We usually don't enter into contracts. This is, uh, again, practice from before my time has generally just been a handshake. You know, this is how much you've asked for for your pay and uh, only in the last couple of years has the cost of it been an issue. Years ago, it wasn't an issue.
Well, it's kind of pretty steep, eight thousand dollar increase on a small budget like this is just.
No, I agree. Unfortunately, the, the town doesn't have the manpower to do some of this stuff, which is why we had to get the burying ground out of this. That was costing us just that one cemetery, was costing us about seventeen thousand, excuse me, dollars a year. Had the highway department not been able to take them, we'd be looking at thirty-seven thousand dollars.
As a, as a finance committee, speaking for the finance committee, I see, uh, um, a big problem, you know, with this. You know, I'd like to see it try again, you know, I don't wanna, but just pick some co, uh, I, I'm not gonna tell you, the only thing I'm gonna say is just pick some companies and it's just gonna cost you the stamp stuff and just mail them and ask them for a bit. Some of these other landscaping companies.
Some of the smaller ones.
Yeah, the smaller ones.
I mean, we were having local people cut this stuff. You mentioned Harris Chase, I know, some of them, they used to cut the grass, but do it cheap money. We never worried about, you know, liability insurance. I mean, you ask for liability insurance and all of a sudden, you just go early, you said, this went from four hundred a year to four hundred a, a mowing. I mean, what are we doing here?
And that's, the four hundred a mowing, that is generally the average of what we got when we used to get companies. Even the companies that we've dealt with in the past have been small. Mark Saint Laurent was a one or two man.
He doesn't cut anymore?
No, he used to do the burying ground.
Harris Chase would though, I would believe, if you just asked him to cut it.
He, he may have. I mean, we put it out, I'm not sure. Now, last year, he did bid. He was outbid by the DiMarandios. Uh, this year, he didn't bid. So. But the companies, this was when we used to have companies that did some of these, the prices were about the same. The Morton cemetery, for example, at one sixty, when it used to be small landscaping companies, Saint Laurent or the fellow from Lakeville, that's about what they used to bid, so. If you're talking a company that's got insurance, I'm not sure that the numbers will come out that different. If we went back to people in general, if we could get them, excuse me, to bid, it would probably be lower. This year, they just didn't bid.
I guess, uh, I'm gonna ask a question. If you don't get an increase of eight thousand dollars, would, what would the cemeteries look like?
Uh, not good. They will get mowed a lot less frequently. They will have the tall grass. That's when we generally get the complaints. Fortunately, we haven't had complaints the last couple of years.
Why don't we just do a few goals?
That would be fine. They do amazing things.
Isn't there something, you have to maintain veterans graves?
The veteran graves, absolutely. And, and that was a question actually that Richard posed when Richard was, was in, uh, as town administrator. He said, well, can't we go in and mow only the, the veterans? And I said, you can do that for about one year and then they won't.
Nobody's gonna wanna do it. You go into a cemetery to do three graves and it's only two hundred.
Especially if they're in the middle, then after a couple of years, you can't get to them.
Yeah. I'm just saying, we gotta fund something, obviously, to take care of the veterans and whatever's gonna happen, but.
Like, I would try to.
Well, we're going to go into disrepair. I don't want, I don't want the cemetery to go.
We don't want a disaster, no, we don't want that.
Just to see. To do a comparative. Just to see, to do a comparative, 'cause if you only had, if you only had one bid, and you have nothing to compare it to, so you're kind of like, on the hook for that one bid, so I think that to do it justice, you need to get some more bids.
If I can get people to...
I know, I know, it seems like...
I, I know it doesn't, landscapers, so if I'm, does that violate anything, I'm not supposed to insider, can I give you some names of some people, and you can call, I know they have a charity, it's something to do with...
No, there's nothing wrong with that.
I don't think there's anything wrong with it, no.
Okay, yeah, and they're local, so they just, you know, they're already out, they're driving by, get it done.
Yeah.
I don't think it needs to be weed whacked, it's just mowing it down real quick, they don't need to weed whack and edge every stone.
Right.
Correct, it's just to keep it looking aesthetically acceptable.
Yeah, but, all right, usually, the weed whacking is every other time, not necessarily every time.
So maybe get a little scopol work, and then they can bid it based on...
Right, well, that's, that's what we put out for this, we put out basically that said, you know, you're responsible for mowing, trimming, X, Y, Z, and then, you know, the only difference between this year and last year was the question, do you have insurance, and that was what scared pretty much everybody away.
So we'll meet offline, and I'll give you some names, and I'll probably get a handle on that.
All right, anything else?
This for me? This for Mike?
Anything else for Mike?
Okay. Just, just need to clarify this, who suggested that we provide, they have to provide insurance?
Um, we started asking that for different work a couple of years ago.
Who's making that?
Cemeteries, when we had different people come in to do work, and that started, actually, I think, with actually digging the graves, we started asking for insurance, now you're not allowed to dig graves without insurance, you used to be able to dig graves without insurance.
Who required that?
We required the insurance for digging.
Why?
In case they caused damage, we had some people that were hitting headstones, and then...
That happened once.
Yeah, it's happened a heap of times.
Dig safe, actually, if you go over thirty-six inches, unless there's an exemption for a cemetery, you have to have a trench permit, and you're supposed to have insurance.
No, we're, we're exempt from trenching.
You're out, exact, okay.
No, but we had issues, even with the mowing, we had people slamming into stones with lawn mowers at one point.
Look, Harris Chase used to cut, used to dig the graves over at Chase Cemetery, does he still do it there, they used to dig them by hand for crying out loud?
They do it with machine, Heath does it, yeah, he, he does...
Yeah, Harris is that?
Right, Heath, Heath does a few of ya, he and John Ashley pretty much do all of them between the two of them, and he, he is insured for that, so, that really wasn't an issue with, with the Chases or with John, when we started asking for insurance, it was just a matter of...
Well, John, of course, we have insurance, he has a backhoe cutter.
Right. But, you know, that's how we got started on the insurance conversations, with the grave digging, and then it translated, you know, I think when we asked this year, that was just more of a curiosity, do you have it or not, it wasn't a requirement of the bid.
They probably took it as a requirement, because they bid.
Yeah, they got scared.
Well, they did get scared, but it, it was posed as a question, do you have it, and if you do, what do you have it, it wasn't, you must have it, or anything like that.
But that's probably why you didn't get them all in bits.
Right.
All right, everybody good with Michael?
I'm not good with the nineteen.
Oh, no, no, that's not, no, but we don't have any more questions for him, correct?
No.
Correct, all right, and he's gonna get you some names, and then you can...
Or help you help us.
Yeah, this is just initial, we're gonna go back and look at everybody's budget, so we're not...
The planning board's gonna help the cemetery.
All right, is anybody here for a good one?
Sure.
No.
No?
Explain that concept.
There you go, now you can have your budget, it's pretty much seven thousand.
Who's, which one's planning board?
Planning board is one seventy-five.
Nobody came for the planning board, they must have a meeting tonight, does the planning board have a meeting?
No, she, she talked to me today, earlier, she talked to you.
One seventy-five, you said.
She's, she's got a problem with childcare, so that's why the...
She was gonna come?
Yes, she was gonna, but, planning board members could come.
Yeah.
Well, you know, she was gonna try and get somebody, she has childcare issues.
Okay.
Let's chop the budget by fifty percent, every year.
By forty-seven thousand.
You wish it twenty percent?
Twenty thousand? Yeah, we'll chop it.
Minus twenty thousand?
Yeah.
Tell them because there was nobody that showed up, Ellie.
Cause Jack, you explained their absence, right?
You're like the weirdo next time.
If it's not Ross' fault, it's Jack's fault.
Okay, we have one more, Selectman.
Oh, chop that one.
Oh, I knew you were gonna come out with that. Are you gonna look at the planning board, then? There's nothing to look at, okay.
They don't, their budget was cut completely, telling that, there was no change, there was very little change.
It was point nine three.
There were one seventy-five, they only, I mean, it went up by point nine three, yeah, a percent.
You're talking about the planning board?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, you want me to tell them we didn't ask for it up?
No, we don't want it.
No, here's the thing, we're gonna probably cut everybody's budget, so, it is what it is.
Why are you saying that, you're scaring me, you're gonna get the schools more money, or something?
No, no, we're probably not gonna be cutting everybody's budget.
I think we're just gonna wait for all our money.
You think we're gonna be cutting everybody's budget? Selectman, what number is it?
One twenty-two.
One twenty-two?
One twenty-two.
Did you, did you hear, they don't know books?
What?
Is Selectman gonna get individual contracts? Fifty thousand a year?
We're in line, well, the Finance Committee want you, we want fifteen apiece.
So i- i- if we give you fifteen apiece, you'll give us fifty thousand each, sounds like a good deal.
So we gotta find the money.
All right, we're good.
Yeah.
Point two three percent.
We're gonna stand on the corner with a boot like a fireman, and he's going to be recording?
I'm good, everybody all set?
That's it, we're done?
Yeah, I don't have anything, do you have anything?
You run so fast meetings.
Well, we're gonna have easy budgets tonight, so...
Yeah, I'm gonna keep going as chairman.
Not, no, 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 oh, no, no, no.
How many more weeks do you have to do, chairman?
That's it, I'm done.
This is your last meeting?
No.
Yes, it is, yeah.
We're gonna have a couple of meetings this week.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, that doesn't count, this is my last, hurrah.
The big guns are coming in now.
Ceremony.
No, the big guns are coming in now, we're just gonna annoy you.
Do we have to wait, can we take a vote now?
For what? As of, uh...
Oh, we have to wait till June sixth?
June?
I mean, not June eighth, it was...
It was my idea.
Nice, nice, nice try, we're not waiting till June, thank you.
So I wanna know where your victory party's gonna be, because I wanna go.
Yeah. In your backyard.
Dinner.
No, my backyard, I mean, I... We can, you can, I asked you to leverage your body, right?
Stop scaring them, Lisa.
I know, he is scary.
My backyard.
Oh, my backyard.
All right.
Well, we'll give you a pony pot, you need stuff, okay?
Do we know what we're, what budget's we're gonna do on the seventh?
Huh?
Do we know what budget's we're gonna do on the seventh? Do we know what budget's we're gonna do on Tuesday, the seventh, so, Finn Tom knows.
Tuesday, the seventh?
Yeah.
We're gonna vote on the budget, last week? What did we do last year on Tuesday?
We probably should do capital equipment, capital planning, um, those are some of the heavier ones.
You didn't do any of Jack's, though.
Right, what?
You haven't done any of Jack's, like, town administrator and all his insurance.
So we'll do that that night, too.
No, we did insurance, didn't we?
Property insurance. Oh, okay.
I want you guys all to know that tomorrow, Lisa and Jackie are gonna represent County Free Town at the, the meeting in Vista.
Amazon.
Amazon Tiff.
Worcester.
Worcester, okay.
So if the state approves it, they're coming.
If the state approves it, it's a goal, correct?
It's a done deal.
Yeah.
Okay, the next meeting's gonna be when?
April seventh.
So April sixth?
No, seven, April, April sixth is our election, that's because it's election day.
Election day.
April seventh, at seven P M, April sixth is the election.
Sixth is the election, and the seventh, yeah.
You don't know.
Motion to adjourn?
There's a write-in campaign going on right now.
You're so foolish, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
We couldn't even, uh...